All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our work policy session tonight. We are going to get started with the flexing. So if you can join me in the flexing.
I'd like to lead into the flag of the United States of America and to repel it for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have four of our board members here tonight for a tour. We just lost. Okay. Well, we're going to roll right into two point O on the work session and we're going to turn it immediately over to Mr. Weeks.
Good evening. We have a couple of different policies we're bringing back today. These originally came before the board back in April. The first one, policy A C, non discrimination. This was a fairly simple original change. The blue is what's added. Anything red would be what is being struck through this. This comes out of House Bill twenty two eighty one where it does require districts to designate a civil rights coordinator. Most districts have designated their human resources as also the civil rights coordinator. And that's what this policy would do with the blue that's in the center. Board designates the director of human resources as the district's civil rights coordinator. And so that's the only change of addition wise to this policy is that particular blue line. And then the only things that were struck were down below where it struck out some of the the house bills that previously were listed as those go into the ORSs above.
Page four eight.
Yeah, for the next policy. Yes. Yep. And so then moving on to the next one. Yep. That's okay. So any questions on policy A C? Moving on to the next one in the criminal checks and record checks and fingerprinting. This one used to be two policies and OSBA's recommendation was to basically remove the AR and make it one policy. So everything that is red and struck through is what OSBA is recommended that comes out. The blue, for the most part, is the addition from OSBA. The changes that are in here from the last discussion that we had back in April was all the way down on four eight. There were a couple of pieces in here that were looking to be changed. One of that was a concern that was expressed over not allowing parents or guardians or forcing them to go through a fingerprint background check if they wanted to do like a field trip or something like that. So wording that was looked at in here to address that concern was overnight chaperones who are not a parent or guardian will be required to complete a fingerprint fingerprint based background check. Parents and guardians will complete the in-state background check through the district's volunteer process. What that is, is we use a company called the Background Investigative Bureau. So they go in, they do the background check. It gives us any record, including a speeding ticket that they would have and anything up to more. And so we get a thorough backgrounds check still on the individuals apparent guardian, but doesn't put them necessarily through the fingerprint process of OSP and the FBI, which is the fingerprint one that's in there. So that's the change that was here off of that concern. The other concern we heard was number four, and that was originally struck at that last board work session as well, where volunteers transporting students other than their own in a private vehicle off district property for district sponsored activity. So there was a concern on that one with the board the last time we met, and so that one was struck as well. So those are two changes that have been made through Kirk County that are different than OSBA's. The other concern that was added in that we put into this one is all the way on the last part of the page. We're on six eight at the bottom. OSBA had originally taken out the section for appeals. We put that section back in amongst hearing from some board members on that. So the appeals were added back in, which they originally struck out of the AR in the previous section. So those were the changes outside of OSBA's recommendations.
My only concern is ORS three twenty six dot six oh seven that the background policy for volunteers under section A. If a school district or public charter school allows volunteers to have direct unsupervised contact with school children, the school board or public charter school governing body must adopt and implement a policy that requires those volunteers undergo a background check. So if they're staying overnight with students at all, you put them in the position to perhaps be, you know, with them unsupervised.
Yeah, and that's where.
So I don't know if that is that I just want to make sure it notches up to law.
Yeah, they still they still would go through a background check that we use the a company called the Background Investigative Bureau to do that background check. The difference would be if we chose to do the fingerprint one, they'd have to go to a place like Field Print Oregon and actually do the fingerprints to do the background check. And that can take two, three weeks to do. The Background Investigative Bureau is different where they put in their information and the company does it. That's not fingerprint based. And we get those results normally in twenty four, forty eight hours somewhere in there. It just depends on how many counties, because every time someone moves, it has to go to that county for them to sign off on where they've lived, if there's been any violations. The B I B gives us detailed enough background checks, like if the someone is speeding, it would let us know that. And that would be important if someone's got a bunch of infractions for driving and they want to drive. And as a chaperone, you know, that's more of a concern for us than other infractions and so forth. So we still see each individual infraction that sits there on the Background Investigative Bureau background check. So we would see either one. I would look to the board for what they would want to see, whether it be a fingerprint test for parents and guardians for that, or whether they would want the Background Investigative Bureau on that. Both are background checks. They're just different in how we.
Do you get different information?
The ones through O D E, O D E and those fingerprint ones, they eventually sign off and approve and deny. And that's where that appeal process for that one comes through. With the Background Investigative Bureau, we have procedures that we look at as we determine whether or not they meet criteria. So forth is if someone has a felony, we don't allow a felony. Particularly if there's an assault or otherwise, then we don't allow those. And then we make that determination if it's on a B I B. If it's an O D E fingerprint one, O D E makes that determination.
So you're getting the same information. One takes longer and you don't have control of the information.
And one is, I would say the OSP little bit more because it goes through both an OSP and FBI database with the fingerprints. Where the B I B goes strictly off of convictions.
So in on four eight. Would it be too much of a stretch to add grandparents in there in addition to parents and guardians?
We could add that in if that's what the board desired.
Children are connected to their grandparents.
So just have a say parents slash guardians slash grandparents.
It's twice. But that opens that door. Then tiny little one, but always want to want to have to use number three, third word from the end districts has an apostrophe before the S. And then then at the end of that one. Some one under appeals. So do we need to make that appeal to? I know that this was taken out and it was put back in. But I wonder if we need to make that appeal to the superintendent of public instruction for some reason, or can we not just make an appeal to our local superintendent? Why is it going all the way? Why are we involving the E necessarily?
We could change that. The original one was through the Department of Administrative Services for the background checks and the fingerprints. So we could change here. What happens is is when someone doesn't pass, they send us a letter that says this person doesn't pass. We don't always see all the details of why they didn't when it's an O D E fingerprint one, which is why it has gone that direction. So what happens is is when we get a letter, it basically says this person cannot volunteer or can be employed in the district. It is. So we don't get as much detail from that one. So if they would want to appeal, we would have to get those records from them. We don't always have them. We get the answer of yes or no in a letter.
So I would strike appeals in the appeal section, the first paragraph, I would strike from O D E. And I would strike everything at the end to the superintendent of public instruction, just make it to the superintendent. And the reason for that is because the superintendent, if it's an O D E related issue, can elevate it to O D E, but we don't necessarily bring O D E. Everybody needs a second bite of the apple. If you're going to be denied the opportunity to go to your kid's school trip, will you at least be able to ask Alyssa, are you sure? Or say, that wasn't me, you ran the other Steve Halliday. And then that would that would create that pathway to taking them one step and get a second look at the D P. And then likewise, in the second paragraph, we'd strike by O D B. And then everything of public instruction. Record check was done by. Well, not necessarily. Well, yeah, the fingerprint based. That's true. Well, unless you use this. We don't have that.
It's all controlled. When we send, we send it to a place called Field Print Oregon that does those the fingerprints and sends them off. And then we get just the report back. Or we don't see the detail report. We just see whether or not they passed or not. So but that's, I think, what Mr. Cooper is saying is trying to then appeal it from the superintendent's office to gain those records to then be able to make that determination. We have not been through that process of asking or trying for those yet. We could also put them through a B I B to see what comes back on our own as well as we work through that appeal.
It's going to be situation dependent. I mean, I I know I have problems all the time because there are six Scott Coopers in South Oregon, one of whom doesn't pay his bills. And I hear from that one, people.
That's the reason that comes about.
Another question. So we're going to list head coach, assistant coach, but then delete overnight chaperone.
This is four eight.
So listing head coach, assistant coach, and then deleting overnight chaperone and volunteers transporting students. But Kirk County School District has a liability releasing a release form absolving them from all responsibility when they're transported by somebody else. That's in the permission slips. And then policy E E O E, which refers to other designated adults who can transport kids, who are those other designated adults? And should they have background checks? Because putting them in your car would give them direct unsupervised access to kids. I know that Ben La Pine requires all fingerprints and background checks for any volunteer regardless. So a lot of like when I read a lot of our policies, they're really set up to protect the district and not the parents or the children themselves. And I think we had an issue earlier this year that unfortunately was all over Facebook with permission slips, absolving from like sexual abuse, absolving the district of all these different things that would happen if you put your car, if you put your kid in the car with somebody. So to me, that's a conflict of interest because it's the districts like saying, hey, Ali, you know, if your kid gets molested by somebody who drives them, we have a policy, you sign the permission form. You know. So I I have some issues with. I just feel like everybody should be fingerprinted, background checked. We live in a different world. We're looking at trafficking and abuse, you know, out of control. And do we really want that on our district? And we already had issues with the earlier this year that we have a form that oh, we're not responsible. Sorry. So that's my issue is I'm looking at a way that is protecting the parents and students because that's who I work for. I'm not looking to protect the district. And I want to protect the district, but I don't want to see a child get hurt because the district has some permission slip that says we're not liable for that. So my intent is after the student and the parents.
So let let me ask you, Cheyenne, if if your parent or grandparent wants to go with the third grade class and walk down to the Bowman Museum, you want them to have a fingerprint background before they can do that?
Well, I'm saying.
Because that's where you're going with that.
When I said everybody, so.
That's where I'm trying to get back is draw that line between the casual parent volunteer. I mean, technically, the way you just described it, a mom who comes in the classroom to help with a Halloween party and brings cupcakes and sticks around needs to have a fingerprint background check. I don't think you want that.
Well, I think that we live in a different world and I wish that it wasn't that way, but we also have lots of parents and grandparents involved maybe. And you know, I I have no idea. We see lots of things where there's arrests and drug issues and things going on that our kids need to be protected of who they're with. And so I don't, I mean, I'm looking more from the case of like, if you're, you know, driving students to the Portland Zoo or driving students on a on a trip, but if they're coming just into the classroom for volunteering or bringing cupcakes in or coming in to see the science and space exhibit, what the kids are doing like, no, I don't necessarily think they need it for that. But if they're going to be put in a position of being with a child unsupervised. You know, like I've I did, I've gone to Baker City with my kids and spent the night in the gym and I don't, I wasn't fingerprinted or anything, but we were living in a different era unfortunately than we even were five years ago because we're looking at trafficking, we're a sanctuary state. We, there's lots of issues going on with things that our children need to be protected. But to answer you directly, Scott, no, I do not think if you're bringing cupcakes into the classroom, we need to be fingerprinted. But I do think if you will ever be put in a position to be with a child unsupervised, you do need to be.
Look, we, it sounds like that's your, that's your key. So maybe, maybe we could. Play with that language a little bit further, gets that pointed there.
But if we play with the language, then it's going to line up to all the ORSs. That's my concern. Like when you go through all of OSBA's stuff, they either have the wrong ORSs listed or they don't match up. So like that is a concern. Like when we tweak language, we have to make sure that it is lining up exactly to law.
Don't. Because what you're proposing is that we're more restrictive upon ourselves than the law requires. And we have with the right to, you have the right to do that. You don't have the right to be less restrictive than the law allows, but you can be more. Right now, you've got certain people have to be background checked. Certain people have to be fingerprint background checked. What you're in the fingerprint background check to check is more is more, more of a background check than the regular background check, right? So if you want to say, well, we already have the rules that you're background checked. But we're, we want you to have the other background check. It's more expensive, it's more, it's longer, and it has more. I don't know. It lets the FBI, the, you know, the the other thing. That's more restrictive upon ourselves and we have the right to do that.
And I just think when you're put in a case of being perhaps to be unsupervised with a child. So for example, like myself personally, when I went to Baker City ten years ago, I was unsupervised with kids in the restroom. You know, because they're in there changing and the teacher wants somebody in there and you're helping them, you know, brush their teeth or find their stuff. Well, those are pretty intimate, like places that you're at. And I think people should, you should double check that the people that are in there are are safe with them, especially if you're like on overnight trips. And we do that. We do coast trips and things like that. So that that's my concern. Do you remember what I'm talking about? I think it was last year, the commission supposed to.
Yeah, there's a question that has language from our insurance provider that has some language in there we're looking at. But yeah, staying connected to what you guys are doing. It sounds like there's that line of if someone's going to be unsupervised with some of our students. I I think we'd want those extra precautions in place.
Well, and that's actually in here. I mean, if you read that first line, it's formatting as much as anything. The district should require a fingerprint based criminal record check for volunteers allowed direct uncoordinated contact with students in the following position. And we list three head coach, assistant coach, overnight chaperones. And then we come up with this other language, which sort of modifies that third one, except it doesn't belong there. That's a list. It should stop at overnight chaperone. True. And then you need to write the next paragraph to mean what you say, which is if a parent guardian or grandparent is going to be in a volunteer capacity where they will be always supervised, we can waive the fingerprint based background check in favor of the background, the. So with a rewrite, you can get the language exactly the way Cheyenne's concerned about. And I agree with your concept that they're going to be indirect. Unsupervised is yes, fingerprint. But anything short of that.
And who determines that they'll not have direct contact? Like in the district, like who's responsible for that? Like determining if they'll have direct or indirect contact. Is that the teacher directly?
That would be signed off by the principal of the individual school. Yeah, and I would, I would think that ninety five percent of our.
It doesn't have to be limited to overnight. Yeah.
When you, you, you all know that if you take a child to the restaurant, like, you know, let my pants into the, my pants, and you, my shirt cannot, like, little kids do that. And so we just, we live in, it's unfortunate and it's really sad. But I remember even going through getting my, doing my master's program and they told us way back then, you cannot no longer hug a child. You know, you have to take them from the side and but things have been escalated since then. But we just want data. Protective.
And I think we want to train our people in those circumstances on those field trip, those like day field trips or something that we don't have a parent volunteers taking students to the restroom, but that's the teacher and the and the parent stays at, you know, and that would be a training place that that we can work on. If not, if that's not already.
Yeah, I just worked it. Yeah, unsupervised. I think she's writing vigorously over there. Make sure he's got everybody's thoughts in down on that one. Anything else on that one? And then the AR one is the one getting. Okay. So the first thing that's confusing about this is you have two. You have two documents that say D J C. First one says delete. That does not mean delete the policy. Sorry. What what's happening is they've, the proposed modifications are so different. They're structured so different that you would not be able to follow if they were to a strikeout. Okay, so basically this just means strikeout. This first re rewrite. Yep. Strike out everything that was existing in D J C, but keep a D J C policy. It still has the same title bidding requirements, but they've completely rewritten how it looks. So yeah, I know it. That's a weird one because some of them do say delete and they actually mean delete the policy. The changes to this, there's a D J C and a D J C A R. And there's major changes to this. A key piece of information is it's not going to change anything that we're doing. It's just rewritten. Just restructure. There's nothing in here that will change anything that we're already doing. That's already, no process changes. The whole point of this rewrite started from House Bill one zero four seven, which I read through. There's basically two things in there. One of which is just D E I stuff that doesn't necessarily change what we're doing. It's if you anyway, I don't want to get into that piece. But the other biggest piece of that change is that there's a what's called a small procurement threshold that if it's less than $10,000, you just go out and purchase whatever it is. And then if it exceeds $10,000, you have to get three informal bids. The change in House Bill twenty ten forty seven was that that $10,000 threshold changes in the law to $25,000. As I mentioned before, the school district can make a choice to be more restrictive than the law. And we're actually proposing that we keep our threshold at 10,000 because 10,000 is still a lot of money for us. And it used to be five. When I first started here, it was 5,000. And they moved it to 10 and we kept it at five for a few years and then we eventually went to 10. But so basically, and that's why I say all of this rewrite is has even though there's a bunch of stuff in here that's changed in format, it's not going to change anything because what it would have changed is 10,000 to 25 and we're proposing that we stay at 10. So OSBA's model policy that they gave us looks different, somewhat different than this in that their policy assumes that a district doesn't have model contract rules. You may not have ever heard of model contract rules, but we actually do have model contract rules. Scott was here when we implemented those. They start, we started them in 2013 and they were updated a couple of times. And since what OSBA said is if you do have model contract rules, then make your policy according to that with not very much guidance. So I've done what I think I could do to try to incorporate the fact that we do have model contract rules into this policy proposal. Model contract rules are a board adopted set of purchasing rules that can be different from the regular rules within limits. And I, let's see here. Not all districts have the model contract rules. Everything I know about model contract rules I learned from Jerry Milstead, who was a project manager that we had when we had our last bond. And I gave you a little printout about all the little Google search articles about Jerry Milstead, Jerry Milstead. He was actually a construction project manager. He was on a committee, a statewide committee that helped the Attorney General write the rules for model contract rules. So basically what they are, I gave you a copy of them. There's, I don't know, twenty pages or something of of the model contract rules. The board adopts them by resolution. And then we can, and what that does is it creates special class procurements that we can then just use forever until they're changed by the board. So the first couple of pages is the resolution, everything beyond that is the model contract rules. Knowing that these rules exist and what they say is essential to understanding how to adopt D J C and D J C A R. There's a special procurement section in here in the basically, I just kind of want to run through what this is. It starts out and it says in our policy, our proposed policy, that the board is a local contract review board. The board doesn't have to be the local contract review board, but in our district, the board had has designated itself as a local contract review board. We've adopted our own model contract rules as listed here. And then it talks about in under goods and services, it talks about all of the thresholds where you can see we're keeping it at $10,000. That and then the number two between 10 and 10,000 and 250,000, that's state law. That all the rest of this is state law. Everything from public, every, basically, everything the rest of the way through this policy is state law. And then I'm going to talk about the AR and then we can ask questions about the whole thing, all of them together. Because AR is about the same thing where you see there's a delete there. There's a whole bunch of pages that say delete. And then the, I think the first, the one that says delete is, it's like it's maybe fifteen pages. And the replacement for it is three, three pages? Because of the fact that we're able to just say refer to the model contract rules for the most of it. So in in the replacement D J C, the one that says two point one point five, and it says one point three at the bottom. They've actually changed the title of this to from used to be public contracting rules and procedures. The new title is exemptions from competitive bidding and special procurements. So the first six things are the things that are exempt from competitive bidding. Special procurements would be anything in addition to that. Special procurements would be anything in addition to that. And then down at the bottom of that first page, that very best bottom paragraph, uh, paragraph that says when the LCRB, that's you, approves a class special procurement. The district may award contracts to acquire goods and services within that class. Without continuing to go to the board every single time. And that's what the model contract rules do. Then the rest of the policy is basically just law. So bottom line is this whole policy revision came from a change in the law that allows us more freedom, but we're choosing to not.
We have a policy to say in the model, we have more freedom, we're still doing one of that.
Yeah, I, and I think the whole rewrite. Is good. Somebody really put a lot of work into making this make more sense. Um, but I think it was. My, my interpretation is that it was prompted by the fact that there was this House Bill's twenty, uh, ten forty-seven, because that's what the notes from OSBA say is that. Um, in that summary page, it says. In that beginning summary page in your pocket. It says OSBA recommended changes due to Hospital ten forty-seven passed in twenty twenty-three, and then it talks about bidding requirements.
We've been using the process for a little over ten years now. Obviously, it must be working fine.
It, yeah, it works great.
Anything that needs to be tweaked on it while you're talking about it?
The model contract rules? No. No, we would go through a completely separate process to do that and we haven't had a need to. Everything has been working really well with that. The only thing is that it's in this particular proposal, we have. Um, textbooks, because that was in the old policy. And that's not addressed in our model contract rules. Textbooks is, is a class. It's just not, for some reason, we just didn't address it in our model contract rules. But textbooks are something that. You, we all, the best way to do that is to go through, uh, it's a regional. Depository for textbooks and so getting quotes on textbooks doesn't do you any good, just a bunch of extra work and then you're going to save way more money just by going through the depository. So. And that's allowed.
So I have a hyper technical question.
Okay.
For you, which I should have asked before. So there, there's the school board and there's the local contract review board, which are two separate entities. They have to be all the same people. But we have to adjourn the school board meeting in order to convene as the local contract review board, do our thing and then go re, reconvene the school board. So since we're changing the local contract review board rules, who's supposed to adopt this? The school board or the local contract review?
These are school board policies. You would only convene the local contract review board if there was a decision about a special procurement that needed to be made.
So the else, because it starts out talking about the LCRB has adopted the model rules, et cetera. So the LCRB doesn't have to adopt any of this stuff. That's a more of a Melendez question. Check that.
Okay.
Get back to us later.
Okay.
But where, where is that authority? Or is it both? I don't know.
They haven't changed, didn't change any of those rules.
Well, they regularly update those rules every year that we have to conform our policy to them. If the Attorney General makes anything that. Corrects our policy. That was one of the questions I did raise yesterday was. The way this is done, we change our world every time the agent makes a change. How do we know when the agent makes a change? But we work through something.
Okay, so I think the question is, does the board have to reconvene as the LCRB in order to adopt this policy? Okay. Because we know the board, we know the board's ourselves doing the same thing. Right.
And we have to do it twice.
Yeah, I'll check. You know, we know the board would have to adopt it, but the question is, does the LCRB also have to adopt it? Or do you have to declare that the board and the LCRB together? Yeah, okay. Okay, I can look into that.
It's a really confusing area. It's confusing the public when we have to do it, but it does matter.
Can't take action on it anymore, so. Yes, yes, it's time to look into it. Any other questions on those?
Thank you for the explanation. Today I did forget, I had one more note. There's a typo. For the criminal records on two four, that's a very, the one. Under B, two B. There's an extra R hanging out in the very back. Yep, for sure. I'm sorry I didn't catch that because I had it. I made a note. I just, there is, yeah, so. Strike that R off of it. Where I was for Rogue River.
Mister Bliss.
Okay. So the first policy is EBCA. This is a new policy. And it is, it specifically addresses communication following us, what they call a safety threat action. Which anything, it's a lockdown, a secure, a shelter or an evacuation requires that we give. Uh, communication to the parents within twenty-four hours. Um, one of the questions that came up was what do we do with? Putting that out in Spanish. So, uh. Jay is working on a flow chart that shows who's supposed to contact. Who, when, it's in these specific types of issues. And Jake can talk to the specifics about what might be on his flow chart, but that's the way we plan to take care of that particular issue with this policy. I think I had another notes about that particular policy.
I have a couple of questions on this.
Okay.
Twenty-four hours, is that a long time right now?
It's not very long. It's not very long.
Yeah.
So.
Um, this is one of the. Areas where, um, the policy, the Kirk County School District existing policy does not match the ORS. So I don't know. For E.
This is the new policy, EBCA.
So. I'm referring to, um, ORS three, three, six, oh, seven.
I just.
Three, three, six, oh, seven, one.
Yeah, that's the next policy. That's the next policy. Uh, one other question came up on this one and that was in regards to. The wording that says when a school or the district initiates a safety threat action. Uh, law enforcement and fire, emergency services in general could recommend to the school that, that that take place. But the school, uh, has to be the one to initiate that. But you could just take that word out of there and say that it's initiated in response to a safety threat and then you wouldn't have that. That question. I think those are the only questions on that particular policy.
Well, on policy EBCA. Safety threat action is defined by the statute as a lockdown, lockout, shelter in place or evacuation. This is not what EBCA says. It needs to match the statute. The policy says that parents, students and employees are to be notified of safety threats. But not the media or community. Is there a reason? Why the media?
For the media. The, the, the most important communication for us is to our parents. Regarding one of these types of actions. And if that ORS actually mentions the word lockout, that's incorrect. We don't use that. We have the choice to make whatever language we want to use in that particular. Um, policy. But what we use is what's in the, in the current policy that you're looking at, which is lockdown, secure. Evacuation and shelter. I'm not sure I answered your question about the media.
Yeah, I mean, it just, I know we've had a lot of. We wanted the public and stuff as well to be notified with email. Different things going on and usually, I mean, I, I have never, I haven't seen that. Where the media hasn't been notified, but I saw them after that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sure we would make sure then the flow chart process that's, that's somewhere along the line that our communications person. After, after we've contacted parents and made sure that we've followed this ORS or this policy, that we would make contact with the media. The community in general, yeah.
Yeah, obviously they're not going to want to. Do a new special on something that's not, yeah.
Or I, I think my main concern too is just the community.
The thing about safety, safety threat actions is it could be. Next to nothing and trigger like a secure or an evacuation. And in that instance, you know, we still have to make that, that communication to the parents. According to policy, but we may not want to go elsewhere with, with like the media. We would want to contact the community and the, and the parents of something like that. Primarily. Because sometimes there's accidental mistakes with those type of actions.
We're going to figure it out. It doesn't take long for them.
For to get around.
That goes fast.
Yep. I, I want to just go back to what something was, somebody was saying earlier about the twenty-four hour time period. That's really tough. To have the incident, figure out what happened, figure out what to communicate. Get it all written up and approve everybody and then translate it.
Translate it.
Again, who knows how many languages? You know, it's really unfair to staff, but it is a rule. I looked it up. That's the exact language of the OAR, so there's no way to. Avoid it, but it is acknowledged the burden that places. Good luck.
We can ask OS.
I, I mean, I'm just, I've read that on our twenty-four hours. I thought.
On, on.
Because, yeah, I, I haven't had to go through the process of doing that.
On the flip side, I don't see a penalty in the OAR if you fail to meet it, so. Good luck.
Definitely try. Go fast, but it's, it is hard.
A lot easier with a new communication.
That's right, hopefully, yeah.
Right. It's just a lot of moving parts to be on manage. In a crisis situation.
I mean, if somebody literally evades a campus with a gun. You might have a few more things to worry about than besides having translated correctly.
Within twenty-four hours, correct.
Why we have checklists and flow charts, so we just can assign tasks and make sure everything's done at each day, but.
Any other questions on EBC any? A EBCB. So this policy is a rewrite of the existing policy. It takes out, uh, it strikes out quite a few things. There was a question about, uh, you. Uh, the second paragraph where it talks about emergency procedures. So that students and they wanted to change that to they. And, and we see no reason why that shouldn't continue to just stay so that students. Yes, because it's, it specifically addresses our students. There's other. Um, they struck out, um, a piece in there about, uh. Instruction on, uh, various things and thirty minutes per, per month, school month. Fire drills, it struck out some of the stuff on fire drills within the first ten days, but then it again, it addresses emergency drills within the first ten days.
Question back on the thirty minutes that earthquake and safe for the, where they struck out instruction on fires, earthquakes and safety threats. Because if you go to ODE's, uh, drill calendar and click on there, it's required. Um, but we have thirty minutes. Um, of instruction time is required on the ODE calendar.
Mm-hmm, and it requires all of those every month.
Yeah, so are we doing those every?
We are doing those right now. I'm not sure why they struck out the thirty minutes per school month. It's still in the ORS. I checked it this, today. The thirty minutes of training is still in the ORS. So I, I don't think it's a bad thing.
Break it out, so that just seems weird.
I don't think it's a bad thing to keep that in there. I, I think the more we educate our students, the better. So I don't, I'm not opposed to that.
But the requirement, like, why would you straighten it out? So do we want to keep that in there?
I, I mean, I don't know. What, what are your thoughts on it, Scott?
Can we keep it in there for now and then check? With OSBS to why they struck it out? Maybe there's some, maybe you've got a limited, always OD is not up to date, that wouldn't be. I don't know. I don't think it hurts, but I also don't want to adopt requirements that we. Don't have to do.
Uh, further down under safety threats, you can see where they changed lockout to secure. They took shelter in place and just made it sheltered. And then they added, uh. Uh, that, that we will include explanation of our communication strategies in our, uh, in our trainings and drills. And then, uh, we, we already have our procedures posted in every classroom, so that's already taken place. And then they struck out, uh, some more information about the board's executive session to consider whether or not.
What's up with that? Does that change?
Well, are you talking about D? Are you on, I, so I have a question how long, B, C, D? Uh, there's some. Yeah, but that's what Scott, that's what I had down that they're deleting the section about the board meetings and executive session.
I mean.
To consider safety threats, but ORS one nine two point six six zero allows this, but OSBA is deleting that. But they leave the statute listed on the bottom of the policy, but they delete the statutes. Why?
Yeah, I don't know why you would take that out.
Now I have that question.
That's highly sensitive. You have one of those, you don't want to necessarily reveal your vulnerabilities with the whole dangerous world. Yeah, I, that should stay in there. Because they haven't reworded it anywhere else, so.
Earlier on, what I think should you go back to B for, right?
No.
I had a question about that.
Okay.
I have to apologize. I was making a joke with Grant because I grew up in Rogue River and he's from Grants Pass. And I drove down there this week. And so I was this, I, I made some, uh, messy notes on here, so you have to bear with me.
Okay.
Uh, for the earthquake in the section on earthquake drills for students, OSBA is proposing. Not so clear language. Do we not need to use the language of the statute? OSBA says when based on the evaluation of specific. Engineering and structural issues related to a building. The district may include additional response procedures for earthquake emergencies, ORS three, three, six point oh, seven, one. Says a school may drill. Uh, earthquake emergency response procedures to prevent or limit injury or loss of life. We have very aged buildings in Kirk County. And I would just like to suggest that the language match the statute. Because OSBA's language is not clear. On that, because the ORS says loss of life and OSBA's. Really clarify that, so.
We could increase.
I mean, I don't know.
Those big drills at Kirk County Middle School or Crooked River.
No, I'm just saying the language, like the language. To make sure that it's.
Very vague. What does that sentence say?
So the OSBA says, when based on the evaluation of a specific engineering and structural issue related to a building, the district may include additional response procedures for earthquake emergencies. And the ORS three, three, six point oh, seven, one says a school may drill earthquake emergency response procedure to prevent or limit injury or loss of life. So it's two different. The OSBA doesn't say anything about loss of life. It, it doesn't, I, I mean, I don't know. Words matter probably.
What, what does, this is about drills and instruction. What does additional response procedures have to do with drills and instruction? I don't know why that second sentence adds any value.
I don't know why that second sentence adds any value.
The way I interpret that is that if we had a building that was at an extreme risk to an earthquake. And we didn't want students to drop cover and hold, we could change those procedures so that they would like evacuate the building in that particular building. That's the way I interpret that. And we would drill, we would drill and train to that that extent if that was the case.
If you had an earthquake, this is what you do instead of.
Instead of drop cover and hold.
All right, take you back to your question about striking the executive session language. We have another policy, BDC called executive sessions. And it allows an executive session to consider matters relating to school safety or a plan that responds to safety threats made towards school or S one maybe two point six.
Just somewhere else.
It's also the EBCA, the variant John.
And it's in the law, so.
I didn't have any other questions noted on that one, but I'm open for any other questions. I can answer.
I have one uh form for section B, the ORS three three six oh seven one. Uh, also requires all schools shall maintain all exit doors so that doors can be opened from the inside without a key during school hours. But this is not in the EBCB policy.
We're compliant with that. It might not be in the policy, but I can't tell you that we're compliant.
Should we have it in the policy? I mean, it should be reflected in the policy. I don't know if it's law. I'm just asking, I'm just asking a question.
And that would be, that would be something that the board could choose to put into policy if you guys wanted to do that.
Um, I have another one on F for the ORS three three six oh seven one. Says local government and state agencies shall review emergency procedures proposed by schools. And assist schools and instruction and the drilling of students and emergency procedures. And I think that you went over this. Let me just make sure. Uh, policy EBCB says local government, state agencies shall review emergency procedures and assist. And you said we're doing that for thirty minutes.
That's what we do now, yes.
The local government, state agencies shall review emergency procedures and assist the district with the instruction and the conducting of the drills for students. The statue makes it sound like the local government is in charge of the procedures. And will actually ass- assist in a fire, it's like the fire department, but that's not how the policy reads.
So what we can tell, I can tell you what we do is with. With the emerg- with emergency procedures, one, yes, we work really closely with Creek County Fire and Rescue. So we talk a lot about when we're going to have our drills and that's pretty much, they're pretty much happy with when we do our drills. They are also very um involved in the way we do our drills. Cause we've changed some of the way we do our drills to to kind of offset the threats that come from a lockdown. Or or any kind of violent threat that could be outside. So they've been a good part of that. And then with fire, I mean, with with police, I meet with the SROs once a month. And we review safety concerns. Uh, we're planning to do assessments at each one of the schools. Like extensive assessments over the course of the year. Uh, some of the trainings, they come to the SRP trainings that I provide. Face to face with all the staff, they come to those. Um, so they're. They're all really involved with this, with the school district when it comes to this, all our safety, emergencies, drills and procedures.
I'm just gonna say on your, the locked door one you referenced, there's actually a policy BB that. Safety program that talks about fire extinguishers and that stuff where it might make sense to put. Put that kind of language in there versus the the drills, safety drills one. That's something we can look at.
I'm pretty sure that's in the Oregon fire code that you can't have a, you can't have a a door in a school or you have to have key access to get out. It has to have panic hardware or or be able to just unlock and open. That's fire.
Most of them are panic hardware.
All questions for me?
Okay, let's uh let's get going. Um, okay, so the first policy we're gonna take a look at is IGBAF. And it is around, um, basically it's around uh them. Um, creating a little bit more references for this policy. And so I think, you know, I can only envision, but I think that the reason they did it is just to. You know, solidifying, strengthen the policy by adding more references.
Had a couple of questions.
Sure.
G. I think it must have gotten stuck on to her two dash ten. We're on the, yeah, IGBAF, it was one. Oh, I'm on the center. Sorry, sorry, no, I don't have any. Sorry, are there any questions on this one? And put them all together.
They're pretty close, so I get it. I just had to reorganize mine too, so.
There is such a pile of them.
Okay. All right, okay. Uh, the next one is IGBAF dash AR. Um, and this one's a little more, and so it talks about. Um, which requires district employees who are assigned to work with students who are on an IEP. Uh, be invited to attend the students' IEP meetings, so I'm talking about instructional assistance. Uh, this section of the administrative regulation AR, so individualized COVID nineteen recovery services. Is deleted since the provision has sunsetted, so it's gone away. Um, so I mean, basically, if you look in here, um, a lot of it is talking about. Um, inviting our IAs to IEP meetings that support kiddos. Um, there's also. Some, I guess, some changing of free and a po- a free and appropriate public education. To FAP on page seven dash one. And uh, you know, they they, you can keep it, you can take it away. But they do mention on page, or I guess on page six at the top. So if you were to look at it, seven, section C, and then within six. And so that's where they actually spell out free and appropriate public education and then have the parentheses around FAP. And then from that point forth, they use the acronyms instead of the spelled out four words. Um, and so I assume that's why in section ten on page seven. Um, they got rid of free and appropriate education just to be consistent. Um, and then, and then they continue on to page eight, um, doing the same thing. Uh, and then in the last section of twelve, um, the state came down and, you know, set the law around abbreviated school days. And they wanted to put that in this policy.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Is that the beginning or the back page?
You start at the beginning, I can follow.
Oh. So it'd be uh seven, ten.
Okay, seven, ten. So.
You can see. I think that.
Around assistive technology.
C three. I think that uh the appropriate reading and writing needs to be after media. They've put it in a weird spot. So it reads for a student who is blind, visually impaired, infection of braille, and they used to braille unless IEP determines. After the evaluation of reading and writing skills needs and. Says media, it should have the appropriate reading and writing up there. I think that it's just a miss.
Okay.
Um, and then on uh ten, ten. The very first paragraph abbreviated school day means any school day during which a student with a disability receives. Instruction or educational services for a few hours. It says the majority of the other students. Who are in the same grade within the student's resident district, it should say the same school, shouldn't it?
Well, I mean, it could, but it's a district wide, right? So all schools should be serving our kids the same.
With the, we don't see the horizontal. That's why I'm just concerned to make sure that they are getting the same service at every single, like.
The same amount of minutes, right, is what you're saying.
That, I mean, I I would think it should say same school. Um, anyway, and then down under B. Uh, where it says uh informed and written consent from the parent or foster parent is necessary. Uh, this entire section defining informed and written consent is missing. Um, as stated in Senate Bill eight nineteen, and this benefits the districts, not the parents. Um, the IEP students from Senate Bill eight nineteen requires written consent, and it's not in the language. Right in here. In the last pieces paragraph down here, it doesn't, it's not really lined up with Senate Bill. Eight nineteen that requires written consent. Unless I missed it from somewhere else. Then I thought I had one more thing about, uh. This is a long. I didn't start the energy again. I apologize. Cause I had all my other ones. Uh, representative, okay, so are we done with that, Grant?
Unless you make sure we get what you said right on the um abbreviated day piece on the Senate Bill eight nineteen on that paragraph. Which I'm reading right, it says informed and written consent from the parent or foster parent is necessary. Prior to implementing an abbreviated school day or program. So that's saying we have to get written consent.
Okay.
And then I wanted to make sure I captured what you were, what you were wondering.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Make sure that's in there. Okay.
Yeah, but it's in there, cause that you want that to be in line with.
Yeah, that's law. We have to get that in writing. I think we've got some forms that parents have to fill out, but yeah.
Yeah, like the school district can add and cannot initiate an abbreviated day. The parents have to sign and consent that they wanna do this.
And then not only that, then we have to meet with them every thirty days. So it's, so that system's pretty well in place.
And then uh a repres- or so I'm down under on the two dash ten. Number three. Down to five, three A five, sorry, that's really confusing. It's the second page.
Okay, but three A five.
A five. A representative of the district who may be another member of the team who is qualified to provide. Or supervise the provision of special education is knowledgeable about the district resources. It, the statute says and general curriculum, and that's not written. They're supposed to be knowledgeable about the resources and the curriculum. There's a lot of, it's hard to find five A. Put it down five. Um, and then I just had one more on that one.
Cheyenne, real quick on that one. Yes, I'm just trying to make sure I'm following what you're asking about, cause it, you're wondering if it was somebody who was.
So on five, it says a representative of the district or another member of the team who is qualified to provide or supervise. The provision of special education and is knowledgeable, it's not only supposed to say the district resources, they're supposed to be knowledgeable about the curriculum.
Oh, that's, yeah, so with resources, it should also have curriculum written in there.
Resources.
Yeah, resources. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
And then on three dash ten. Three ten, three ten, three dash ten.
Okay.
Under, I wrote over it, uh, under C, number two, that's in the blue. Participation by other employees. Um, in Senate Bill seven fifty-six, it talks about employees having access to the IEP plan. It's not including their IAs, the students' IAs to be part of that, which they should be, as am I missing that or?
No, that's new, that that's in there some.
It's in here.
Because it's difficult if you're not meeting with who's working with them every.
Every day.
Yeah, it's a great point. It, they talk about it in one D, about how all employees that work with the kids, so that covers IAs.
Assigned that we're all deep. Okay, yeah, I just wanna make sure that the IAs come included in that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the blue, the new language added.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good point.
That was it.
Can we go back to ten, ten, or twelve, and it's concerned about grade versus school? In reading that, although this is under the definition of abbreviated school day. Would it really make any difference whether it said school or grade? And we're talking about the majority of the students, not the majority of special ed students. So you've got a big chunk of kids, no matter what school you're in. I don't know that it would change anything if it said school versus grade. So you could give Cheyenne school there and not impact practice. Is that, is there something I'm missing, Grant?
Not that I can see.
And I kinda like the idea of going to the school level, because for example, planning where you've got a four day week, that may be different than a school with a five day week.
Yeah, it's. Or it says residence, school district, residence.
No, under the first paragraph where it says same grade in the last line, it would say same school.
Same school.
I think that would actually work.
Versus grade, yeah.
And not change anything, really.
Legally defined.
What'd you say?
Does the law specify that it has to be grade?
It'd be Senate Bill eighteen. But it would be a more restrictive category anyway. School would be more restricted than grade.
I mean, I don't see it, but we can always ask and get back to you.
I don't know, but it would be more restrictive.
Yeah, I was just thinking some grade levels might have different, yeah.
That language is directly from Senate Bill eighteen.
Kindergarten versus high school. Wonder if that's why.
The the intent is to make sure we're giving these kids the same, like you're not shortchanging kids, so I think that's what we're, we're trying to to capture. But you covered that, because it says right there, the majority of other students who are in the same grade within the student's resident school district. That tells you same grade, different school.
Yeah.
And we're getting the same thing.
All kindergartners in every single school, all first graders.
I was, I would, I would think that covers your ability to say everybody's getting the same.
I just wanna make sure it's equal.
Yep, yep, I would read it.
Well, that same grade within the school district, but first grade, first grade, first grade, first grade of states pillar all have a certain amount of minutes. And it should be equal.
So we'll check in and make sure we capture that intent correctly. And then lastly, I do, I raised this issue about faith yesterday. I don't know if anybody else in this portion, one more acronym is necessary. I didn't, I really don't, if we need more acronym in public education. So there's nothing wrong with words free and appropriate education, and it doesn't really make your policy that much longer, but say that.
Right.
I appreciate that.
Any other questions about that one?
Interesting.
Okay, um, the next one. Okay, um the next one is I G B A J uh G, excuse me. And uh. You might be happier about this one, because they go from faith. And uh to free and appro- talk about not consistent, but um. Yeah, they go with free and appropriate public education instead of babe in the first few. Um but basically, um the gist of this is. Um they've um updated the parental entitlement to their students, their child's records. And so basically, the language to the independent education evaluation section stating. Parents are entitled to examine their students' record pertaining to. Identification, evaluation, educational and educational placements. And provisions of a free, appropriate public education and setting a tame ten business day timeline. So that's the new timeline that parents are entitled to their child's records if they leave or or whatever reason. And that's at the very end of this policy. Access to records. On the third page.
Just sort of generically, Grant, there's a whole lot of work going on with OARs. Better than ORSs here, are those OARs? Because we're implementing the, the. New language about, about giving kids equal access or not a restricted educational day or that bill. Or, or is the ODE off on a rulemaking tangent on their own?
I'm not, I I mean, I don't know, I don't know where they they came up with this, but um. Yeah, I I mean, I don't know, I can ask, but yeah, they, I mean. They determined that we need to get records to them in ten days now, so that's, it's a lot of strain on staff for sure.
And that was more of a general question.
Yeah, got it.
Uh there was a big uproar around that, that bill. To, what do we call it, the abbreviated school day, and maybe, maybe that's all just implementing. Language, but I, it's long been an issue at OSBA that they pay more attention to ORSs than they do OARs. A lot of restrictive action takes place in the OARs.
Any questions about that one?
The transfer of rights to students who have reached the age of maturity. Is that, what is that?
When they turn eighteen.
When they're eighteen, because a lot of the other stuff we see is fourteen now, they've changed.
Yeah, in the world of special ed, it's.
Yeah, the medical stuff is fourteen, but they remain till eighteen.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. You guys okay with that? Okay. Still me. Okay, five oh four. Um so this one is also updated to add reference to this policy. So they added one reference there at the bottom of this single page. Any questions about that one? Okay, I'm moving on to the next five oh four. So this is J B A A dash A R. And uh as you can see on the first page. They do some updates around wording, you know, s- instead of they, student is what they recommended. Um and, uh you know, they, they put some acronyms in there. Uh but then they, you know, they updated. A disability at the bottom in section two, which is more appropriate in today, in two thousand twenty four. And then if you, if you continue on. Um some more just, you know, language update, I guess, according to them. Um but they are, it it's kinda similar to the IEP. Um employees that are assigned to work with students who are on a five oh four plan. Are invited to attend the students' five oh, five oh four planning meeting. And so it's a very similar to our IEPs. So our IAs, if they work with any students that are on a five oh four. Um they can, they can participate in the creation and then any, any meetings pertaining. You guys okay with that one? Alright, so we have two policies around restraint or seclusion. Um the first one is J. G A B. And um. If you go to page three. Um really, like what, what we had in our policy was, was fine. Um what they recommended is that instead of what you guys had created, or the school board had created in the past. That we just go straight to. Um the district shall only utilize a training program for restraint or seclusion to train staff and use in the district, which has been approved by the Oregon Department of Education. It it does say that in your, your current policy or statement. I mean, CPI is an option, I mean, you do state that we're gonna use whatever ODE. I brought some sheets for um, I guess, the five options for restraint and seclusion. I just, I just found one. We use CPI and it's great. So I mean, you guys decide what you would like to do, if you wanna keep it or use their recommendation for that piece.
Grant, is it typical to use one of these systems, or do you use pieces from all five?
We use just one, yeah, CPI is usually the one that I see. Cause I've worked at multiple school districts and, yeah. Yeah, it'd be very difficult. And like, you know.
Like, oh, I didn't know we weren't using that part.
So, so with that, these are. I really prefer the language that we're striking out versus the new blue language. Language was striking out, we know exactly what was supposed to be used. And if we get a complaint, we as a board know that we have to go back and evaluate it against the CPI standard. And if they change it, and they wanna use the MANT system, they gotta come tell us and change the policy, and then everything's clear and everybody's in line. This monkey language just allows them to shift back and forth and reduce accountability and it lands on our desk eventually, and we can sort it all out.
Grant, is there any? Nobody else in this entire district uses any, they've all been.
CPI trained, that need to be trained, yeah.
So nobody can go rogue and bring in their own.
And I, I mean, you tell me which one of these is the best system, I don't know, but let's work on one at a time and keep the communication. Cause everyone's using it, doesn't mean it's the best, but.
Well, and the great thing is, is we have an in-house trainer that can provide the training for our staff, and that's really important, cause we can do multiple trainings throughout the year. When staff come, yeah, so that's really important for us. It is.
It is, it's good to know. If you're in school, it absolutely is good to know.
It, I mean, it's the main one that they recommend to.
Is there anything wrong with leaving that language in?
Not that I can see.
I think it was just because if ODE selected something different, we wouldn't have to go back and change the policies, what I was.
The policy should be dynamic, it should be changed.
What, I'm just saying, he had asked the question, so I said, I think this is why.
Yes, it makes sense about what he's saying, that topic offers. Right, they're not here when.
Only utilize, that's what they're wanting, they only want to utilize one of these, we're just saying. I think it keeps it clean, I mean, I know why they're doing it, cause it's, they're saying only utilize one of these training programs, but if we've already identified it, I think it does. Keep it clear by no CPI, and that's how you're legally like bound to use.
So we're okay with leaving the red and not adopting the blue.
That's what I'm understanding.
Well, just the first paragraph. So, so then we move on to the second grade in um paragraph there, where it says the district shall preserve. And may not destroy any records related to an incident of restraint or seclusion, including audio or video recording. Uh the records must be preserved in the original format and without altercation, according to the law. And then the very page four dash one. I'm not real sure about that one, I'm not an English major. And so they're crossing out identified instead of represented, or actually crossing out identified and represented on the second to last paragraph on the page.
Words different.
No, it's there.
It's not four dash one, no, it's not.
Sorry.
Page four, four, five.
Okay, four, five, excuse me.
Second to the last. This is, this is the question I raised with staff, what does it mean if you say the appeal process is represented in administrative regulation? What does that even mean? Identified, what does represented mean? Is it example of one? Identified is. The correct verb, you know what represented means, you need either. Yeah, don't, you're even, Steve's right, you don't even need a vote. Just ask him. Represented?
And then the last sentence on the page. Says a staff member who violates this policy or in its administrative regulation may be subject to discipline up to and including dismissal. We have policy around personnel, I don't know if that's necessary.
Are we just threatening people? Is that the point of that? I didn't understand why we did that. Wouldn't that be any policy? The end of. The disciplinary process. If you can get it.
Any policy could have that.
Right, yeah, so why do we need it in this one specifically, other than to hammer people over the head with it? I would like to strike that.
My last one. Um this is also restraint or seclusion. You know, the, the things that I'm, I, when I read through this policy is around um recording. Itos that are restrained or secluded. And um, you know, there's some, some change of language, right, in three. And about, you know, immediate written notification of the existence of any record related to an incident or restraint or seclusion. Um and so, I mean, we, it's, I talked to a lawyer today just to double check, but um we of course can record. We're recording on the buses and in schools right now, so it's, it's acceptable to report. I guess moving on to the next page. Um, you know, there's a little bit more clarity around debriefing after a restraint or seclusion, so when you're meeting with the parents. You know, they give you a specific timeline of when you need to make sure that, like that reentry meeting takes place. Uh as well as a briefing around the video or the audio. The parent or the guardian, of course, has the right to, you know, request a different meeting time, or, you know, in the event they're unable to attend the briefing meeting that's. The district schedules. Um in section eight, they talk about. Um you know, they strike out the language that we had as a district, and said if serious bodily injury or death of a student occurs in relation to the use of restraint or seclusion. And then it gives you the, the two subcategories of A and B. Oral notification of the incident must be provided immediately to a parent or guardian of the student and to. Um Oregon Department of Human Services, and then written notification, notification of the incident must be provided to DHS within twenty four hours of the incident. Um there's more clarity down at the bottom. Um around the video, and so I think the goal is, is to try and redra- redact. Um other students that might be in it, but if they can't do it, we still can show them the video, is what this says. And then, and then continuing on to nine, there's just some more, I guess, cleanup. According to um what they recommend uh with the superintendent. Um and then it, you know, it talks about shall instead of will intend, and then they added eleven. The district, upon request from DHS regarding an investigation of an incident or restraint or seclusion. Uh suspected child abuse shall disclose any records preserved to DHS. Or as in designate, designate me which are deemed relevant to the subject investigation in its original format and without altercation. Alter, yeah, excuse me. Alteration. And then at the bottom in fifteen. It says, you know, it talks about if a student is involved in five incidents in a school year, the team, including a parent and guardian of the student will form. For the purpose of reviewing and revising the student's behavior plan and ensuring the provision of any necessary behavioral supports.
Should we talk about the brackets?
No. If you really want to talk about brackets.
We're doing really early, y'all. Alright, just let me take five seconds to answer questions. The brackets mean optional. If you adopt the policy with the words in the bra- brackets, Tammy will remove the brackets for the final policy, does that make sense?
So that's what I got for you guys.
Okay, are there any other questions on this last one?
Oh no, JGA.
Oh, okay, no, we're good on this one.
So you're gonna mean that? You guys are welcome, thank you guys.
Yes, thank you. Now we're gonna move to Dr. Scott.
So I got uh JGA corporal punishment, uh the first line, I think, says it all, the use of corporal punishment in uniform is strictly prohibited in the district. Um you can see that blue section is added from um legal language Senate Bill five uh five seventy seven. Uh we did have one recommendation um that put in a line in the first paragraph that says no employee will knowingly inflict corporal punishment upon a student. Um so it's been uh. Uh now that, that second sentence in paragraph one is. Yep, so the, that, that second sentence right now, as it currently reads, says no student will be subject to the infliction of corporal punishment.
Okay.
Um I hear we're potentially um changing that to no employee will knowingly inflict corporal punishment upon a student.
Gotcha.
And the, the thinking there, when I flagged that one, was. Yeah, it's talked about pain and discomfort and participation in athletic competition, well. You, how's it, how are you gonna deal with a complaint that my kid suffered discomfort, therefore the coach was guilty of inflicting corporal punishment? How are we gonna judge that? So, I mean, I can judge whether you knowingly inflicted it. But just cause you felt it, and that was your perception, doesn't mean the, the coach meant to do anything to you.
Right.
So it's, it's putting the own responsibility back, yeah, that's where the knowing. I mean, if you participate in athletic, chances are you're gonna feel discomfort at some.
On your own.
Voluntarily, yep. Regular. So that, that would be, um we change that, and that's in paragraph one, um that, that blue section in paragraph two is from Senate Bill five seventy seven, direct. Direct language, and then the others, just some minor uh language changes. Any questions on this one? So we bring back uh final version for a second, bringing with the, with those.
Wait, any more questions on JGA? Wait, any more questions on J G A? Okay, so. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, do we have two that we're looking at? To potentially vote on, or do we have changes on those other two, I'd want like for sure.
But you can, if you have corrections, you can still adopt them as corrected.
Okay.
But are there, are there corrections enough to, which two do you think can be done?
Well, I.
Weren't there two that were ready to know?
I had. We had the first readings in April. On two point one dot one. Um, two point one dot two and two point one dot three, but two point one dot two, I had circled because of the changes, but I wasn't. I was gonna ask on that one for sure. So the discrimination. On. Point one dot one, the only thing that Jay had on there was the board designates the director of human resources as a district civil rights coordinator, but that was the only thing that was changing on that one.
Yeah.
I'm fine on that. Okay, Steve, are you? Good on that one too, are you, do you have anything on that?
I'm moving to that policy A C.
Fair.
Alright, we have a motion to adopt, um, policy A C, and we have a second on the table, is there any discussion? Okay, our voting has changed a little bit, so if you are in favor of this, please raise your hand and say aye. Are there any opposed? Zero, so we have four. As a name, or as a yay, and zero is a, sorry about that. Um, two point one dot two. Are we, I have that one circled with a question mark. Were we good to go?
Questions, did we, did we change anything substantial about to, that needs to be reread? As a final, or do you want to rewrite it and then come back?
Let's not add all the. And that's why I had it.
But your questions were all in the A, in the.
A R. A R, is that what you mean?
We're thinking.
I think this one, um.
Alright.
Yeah, just making.
That's the one that has the volunteer.
Oh, yes, this is where we're gonna have grandparents at. Okay, so that one, we definitely need to see. Okay. October twenty first, four thirty. And if there's no more discussion. Four thirty, right, right? All good? You have four, is it four or thirty? It says four thirty. Four thirty, okay. We good?
I have a conflict there.
Well, how come you have a conflict about, no, I'm just kidding you. I think we understood that. Originally. I think we had already understood that one, correct? Yep, okay, the same, we are going to adjourn this meeting.